Yes. Well, good. Okay. I'm going to call this special meeting of March 16th to order if you will all join in the Schlitter Nation's flag. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. This meeting is being held open to the public for 14 seat capacity within the health and safety guidelines for COVID and temperatures were checked. Face coverings and physical distancing are occurring. Also, this meeting is on Zoom and will be streamed on the city's website, YouTube, and Spectrum Channel, too. The public will have the opportunity to address the counsel during the public participation for the item. And let's go with our roll call, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nusrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Monet?
Yes.
Mayor Boobla?
Yes, we're all present. And declarations of conflicts of interest. Hearing and seeing none, we will move to closed session. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. For closed session, item 1A, we have conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, California Government Code Section 54956.9b2, potential cases are two.
Thank you. And we will be out shortly from that and start the rest of the meeting.
Judge. All right, we are back. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor, for the closed session items. There is no reportable action.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're on to item three, approval of agenda as posted or amended.
I would like to move that we move the general public participation to the end of our meeting so we can get right into the agenda and agendized items.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Clerk, call the rule, please.
Councilmember Larson?
No.
Councilmember Nizrati?
No.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Booblaack?
Yes, it passes three-two. All right, then we will move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to accept the three motions?
Some moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Clerk, call the rule, please.
Adopting the consent calendar, councilmember Larson?
No.
Councilmember Nizrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Booblaack?
Yes, it passes four-one. Action item, request to ratify the proclamation of a local emergency by acting city manager Gary R. Hampton, the director of emergency services in response to the unsheltered homeless and encampments crisis within the city of Turlock and appropriate funds. Mr. Hampton?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Good evening. This evening before you is a resolution ratifying the proclamation of a local emergency issued by myself. I also carry the position as your city manager as the director of emergency services for the city of Turlock. The proclamation is in response to the unsheltered homeless and encampment crisis within the city of Turlock. Chief Williams will provide the staff report, but before he does so, I would just like to share outside of the very informal process of delivering the staff reports and comments. Some seven weeks ago, nearly eight weeks ago, when I was employed to come in and serve as your acting city manager, city council made it very clear to me that addressing the unsheltered homeless living within encampments was a priority for the council. It's also been made very clear to me over the seven or eight weeks that I've been here from the community that it is a very important issue for the community to resolve. As I spent the first three or four weeks in the community, and as you know, I've worked here two previous terms of employment, it was obvious to me that in the nearly month that I had been here, the matter, we weren't halting the trend or curving the trend of the number of people we were seeing living in the encampments, and in fact, it was getting worse. And as I personally self-reflected, that was not okay by me. In fact, the people of Turlock deserve better than that. The people living within the encampments deserve better than that. So, I sat down on a Saturday during a pre-scheduled meeting regarding other matters with councilmember Moniz, and we had a very long discussion here at City Hall while we were addressing other issues. And from that conversation, I was able to really elicit from that that we needed to first stop the trend or reverse the trend, because it's very clear that I've heard from all of you that we need a comprehensive strategy to address homelessness. And despite the efforts of the city over the past several years, that has not emerged. And as I talked to councilmember Moniz about this, it was very clear that it would not be possible for us heading into the spring and summer months to spend several months working on developing a comprehensive two- to three-year strategy. And in fact, we knew it would be a four- or five-month undertaking. So, from that, I was able to begin working with city staff, all the department heads, and deeply involved was the police chief, who ultimately was assigned the responsibility of carrying out the development of the ninety to one-hundred-and-twenty-day plan. What we ultimately decided was the best approach to this was to spend the first ninety to one-hundred-and-twenty days trying to stop the trend and possibly reverse the trend so that we could spend the next four to five months actually developing a comprehensive strategy that is sustainable and that will make a difference in the lives of the people living in these very dangerous environments within the homeless encampments for those that are not currently sheltered. But more importantly, we knew that it would give us the time to plan. So, staff came together. I gave them a deadline of seven days to put together a strategy for a ninety to one-hundred-and-twenty day effort to reshelter individuals living within, individuals, couples, and families living within our homeless encampments. Within those encampments, we saw some serious concerns about human waste, garbage and debris, rodents, infestations, and it's just not healthy for anyone that's living in these encampments, and it's certainly not healthy for the community as well. So, staff came together, put that strategy together that would allow us to work to deliver services to those living unsheltered in the encampments. So, certainly, the plan is not to remove them without services. Our goal here is to offer the services and provide the support that they need to get them sheltered, resheltered. In the meantime, during that ninety to one-hundred-and-twenty-day period, to work at the direction of city council to form a group of representatives of the city of Turlock and to try to come together with a two- to three-year strategy. And the reason I propose to staff a two- to three-year strategy is because it's naive to believe that with the emerging issues in this area, that you can plan longer out than two to three years. It's too fluid of a situation. And so, staff has done that. And let me be clear, they've put together the ninety to one-hundred-and-twenty-day plan for council review here tonight. Take your input and then obviously seek your direction going forward. Ultimately, if you adopt this, we will be back before the council seeking direction on development of the team that will put together, team committee, whatever you want to label it, that will put together the two- to three-year strategy. Tonight, you will see a proposed cost to stop and reverse the trend and get people into safe shelter and to address the urgent situation that we see out on the street. So, I wanted to share those personal comments with you, you know, so that everybody is very clear why you are here today. It was abundantly clear to me and has been reiterated every day that I see this city council since my employment nearly two months ago, that this is your priority. And if I have misinterpreted, please make sure I'm aware of that. And I've never experienced that you wouldn't share that if I had misinterpreted. So, I'm going to turn it over just in a minute to interim chief Stephen Williams to go over the plan with you. I would like to direct your attention to the proclamation. There is a typo in the proclamation. So, in the first whereas, you will see it references the government code section. The typo states eighty-three sixty of the California Government Code. It should read eighty-six thirty. And if you looked up eighty-three sixty, you would see that that section of the government code does not even remotely apply to anything that we're doing here tonight. So, a simple typo, that typo resulted from a staff who had worked nearly ten days at this point, had worked through the weekend, and this occurred at two o'clock on a Sunday afternoon when we were all looking at each other, believing that we were done.
Judge? All right, we are back. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor, for the closed session items. There is no reportable action.
Thank you so much. Okay, we're on to item three, approval of agenda as posted or amended.
I would like to move that we move the general public participation to the end of our meeting so we can get right into the agenda and agendized items.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
No.
Councilmember Nizrodi?
No.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Booblaack?
Yes, it passes 3-2. All right, then we will move on to the consent calendar. Is there a motion to accept the three motions?
Some moved.
Second.
A motion and a second. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Adopting the consent calendar, councilmember Larson?
No.
Councilmember Nizrodi?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Booblaack?
Yes, it passes 4-1. Action item, request to ratify the proclamation of a local emergency by acting city manager Gary R. Hampton, the director of emergency services in response to the unsheltered homeless and encampments crisis within the city of Turlock and appropriate funds. Mr. Hampton?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Good evening. This evening before you is a resolution ratifying the proclamation of a local emergency issued by myself. I also carry the position as your city manager as the director of emergency services for the city of Turlock. The proclamation is in response to the unsheltered homeless and encampment crisis within the city of Turlock. Chief Williams will provide the staff report, but before he does so, I would just like to share outside of the very informal process of delivering the staff reports and comments. Some seven weeks ago, nearly eight weeks ago, when I was employed to come in and serve as your acting city manager, city council made it very clear to me that addressing the unsheltered homeless living within encampments was a priority for the council. It's also been made very clear to me over the seven or eight weeks that I've been here from the community that it is a very important issue for the community to resolve. As I spent the first three or four weeks in the community, and as you know, I've worked here two previous terms of employment, it was obvious to me that in the nearly month that I had been here, the matter, we weren't halting the trend or curving the trend of the number of people we were seeing living in the encampments, and in fact, it was getting worse. And as I personally self-reflected, that was not okay by me. In fact, the people of Turlock deserve better than that. The people living within the encampments deserve better than that. So I sat down on a Saturday during a pre-scheduled meeting regarding other matters with councilmember Moniz, and we had a very long discussion here at City Hall while we were addressing other issues. And from that conversation, I was able to really elicit from that that we needed to first stop the trend or reverse the trend because it's very clear that I've heard from all of you that we need a comprehensive strategy to address homelessness. And despite the efforts of the city over the past several years, that has not emerged. And as I talked to councilmember Moniz about this, it was very clear that it would not be possible for us heading into the spring and summer months to spend several months working on developing a comprehensive two-to-three-year strategy. And in fact, we knew it would be a four- or five-month undertaking. So from that, I was able to begin working with city staff, all the department heads, and deeply involved was the police chief, who ultimately was assigned the responsibility of carrying out the development of the 90 to 120-day plan. What we ultimately decided was the best approach to this was to spend the first 90 to 120 days trying to stop the trend and possibly reverse the trend so that we could spend the next four to five months actually developing a comprehensive strategy that is sustainable and that will make a difference in the lives of the people living in these very dangerous environments within the homeless encampments for those that are not currently sheltered. But more importantly, we knew that it would give us the time to plan. So staff came together. I gave them a deadline of seven days to put together a strategy for a 90 to 120-day effort to reshelter individuals living within, individuals, couples, and families living within our homeless encampments. Within those encampments, we saw some serious concerns about human waste, garbage and debris, rodents, infestations, and it's just not healthy for anyone that's living in these encampments, and it's certainly not healthy for the community as well. So staff came together, put that strategy together that would allow us to work to deliver services to those living unsheltered in the encampments. So certainly, the plan is not to remove them without services. Our goal here is to offer the services and provide the support that they need to get them sheltered, resheltered. In the meantime, during that 90 to 120-day period, to work at the direction of city council to form a group of representatives of the city of Turlock and to try to come together with a two-to-three-year strategy. And the reason I propose to staff a two-to-three strategy is because it's naive to believe that with the emerging issues in this area, that you can plan longer out than two to three years. It's too fluid of a situation. And so staff has done that. And, well, let me be clear, they've put together the 90 to 120-day plan for council review here tonight. Take your input and then obviously seek your direction going forward. Ultimately, if you adopt this, we will be back before the council seeking direction on development of the team that will put together, team committee, whatever you want to label it, that will put together the two-to-three-year strategy. Tonight, you will see a proposed cost to stop and reverse the trend and get people into safe shelter and to address the urgent situation that we see out on the street. So I wanted to share those personal comments with you, you know, so that everybody is very clear why you are here today. It was abundantly clear to me and has been reiterated every day that I see this city council since my employment nearly two months ago, that this is your priority. And if I have misinterpreted, please make sure I'm aware of that. And I've never experienced that you wouldn't share that if I had misinterpreted. So I'm going to turn it over just in a minute to interim chief Stephen Williams to go over the plan with you. I would like to direct your attention to the proclamation. There is a typo in the proclamation. So in the first whereas, you will see it references the government code section. The typo states 8360 of the California Government Code. It should read 8630. And if you looked up 8360, you would see that that section of the government code does not even remotely apply to anything that we're doing here tonight. So a simple typo, that typo resulted from a staff who had worked nearly 10 days at this point, had worked through the weekend, and this occurred at 2:00 on a Sunday afternoon when we were all looking at each other, believing that we were done, and signing on the line in front of our city clerk. So that concludes my comments at this time, but I'm certainly willing to answer any questions that you may have now or during the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Hampton before we start? Chief Williams?
Ma'am. Thank you, Mayor, and members of city council, and thank you, Mr. Hampton, for the opportunity to put together a plan in seven days. And I'll tell, so my name is Steve Williams. I'm your interim chief of police, and while I get the opportunity to present this plan to you today, I'll tell you that this really has been a group effort. Every director of every department has been involved, lots of management staff and lots of line-level staff, so this is truly a group effort to come up with this strategy. I have about a 20 to 25-minute presentation. It includes about a seven-minute video, and then you can interrupt me as I go, so I'll be available for questions during the presentation and after the presentation. So tonight, as the manager said, the actions requested of you tonight is to adopt a resolution ratifying the proclamation of a local emergency and also a second resolution appropriating necessary funds to allow us to deal with that emergency.
Sorry. Thank you.
Okay. So I don't want to read off the PowerPoint. I want to kind of use it as talking points as I go through the presentation, but this slide I do want to read. "The city of Turlock is experiencing a significant health and safety crisis endangering both unsheltered individuals as well as the community at large. There is a real and present danger to the health, safety, and welfare of our community, a measurable increase in illegal and nuisance behaviors, and a noticeable decline in the quality of life for businesses, residents, and visitors. The people of Turlock, including the unsheltered, deserve better. The following is a summary of a plan to reverse the trend of illegal encampments in Turlock, connect individuals with services, and begin to restore one aspect of the quality of life in Turlock." So an overview of the plan, as acting city manager Hampton stated, this is kind of a two-pronged approach. It is a 120-day immediate action plan while concurrently developing a 24 to 36 longer-range plan. So the staff involved in this will be doing both at the same time. We're going to take the 120 days, approximately four months, to deal with the immediate emergency in front of us, and we're concurrently going to develop about a three-year plan, two-to-three-year plan, to deal with more of the long-term effects. In order for this 120-day plan to have the efficacy that we want, we need to operate under the proclamation of a local emergency. The city manager declared that emergency on Sunday evening, Sunday, March 14. And when the city manager, I'm not sure, Mr. Hampton, if you said this, but just for the record, the city manager, acting as the emergency services director, has the authority to declare a local emergency. That a local emergency remains in effect for a period of seven days. If the city council acts to ratify that proclamation of an emergency, it then takes full effect. If the city council does not take action to ratify that emergency, the proclamation of the emergency by the manager goes away in seven days. So that's why on Sunday, when he proclaimed the emergency, today is your opportunity. You have seven days to ratify the emergency or decline it. So all city departments are going to participate in both the 120-day as well as the 36-month plan. Allied agencies are going to participate, including agencies like Stanislaw behavioral health, the Community Service Agency. There are many agencies that I'm going to list here in a little bit that have already gone out to encampments to provide services. So it's not just the city departments. It's the city departments partnering with allied agencies as well as service providers. So there are several service providers that we will not be able to do this without. Some of those service providers include We Care. It includes Turlock Gospel Mission. It includes the Salvation Army. It includes United Samaritans Foundation. As you all know, Turlock is a very caring community. There are lots of service providers willing to help. So it's our goal to coordinate those efforts and make those services available to the public. In addition to the service providers, there are also contractors that we are going to have to enlist at the services of because city staff cannot do it. It's things like when it comes time to actually clean up an encampment after we've given notice and we provided service and given notice again and provided service again, and we go in and clean an area up, city staff and city equipment is not equipped to do that. We are going to need to contract with outside providers to do hazmat removal, large item removal, that sort of thing. So we're going to have to enlist at the service of contractors. Bullet point number four, we're going to operate under an ICS structure with an EAP and IAP. What that means is we're going to operate this 120-day emergency plan under an ICS, an incident command system. And what that does is it establishes clear lines of communication and responsibility to particular staff members so that nothing gets lost, so that there's not duplication of efforts, and so that there's efficiency in the process. That's what the ICS is, the incident command system. We're going to operate with an EAP. An EAP is an emergency action plan. Within the emergency action plan, there may be multiple IAPs, which are incident action plans. For example, the first two-week operational period, bullet point number five, will have an EAP, an emergency action plan. And it looks like this. It's about 10 to 15 pages long. It's got a cover page on it, and it clearly defines for this two-week period, what are our goals? What do we need to accomplish within this two-week period? Now, this emergency action plan, it may have multiple incidents that need to be accomplished. For each incident, there will be an incident action plan. So all of that to tell you that there is going to be a lot of documentation required of this so that we can go back in history and see what worked and what didn't work, and also provide accountability and transparency throughout the process. As I mentioned, the first two-week operational period is going to be March 15, which was yesterday, through April 1. When the city manager proclaimed the emergency on Sunday, the first operational period started on Monday. Of course, this is all pending your approval tonight of that emergency. But the first period did start yesterday and will go through April 1. Each emergency action plan with an operational period must be fluid for the changing needs of each plan, but it will have clearly defined goals and measurable results. The goal of the entire 120-day period is to connect people with services and reconnect people with families. This is an example of what the incident command structure looks like, and it provides lines of communication and responsibility up and down the chain so that everybody knows who they report to. There's clearly defined objectives within each section, so I'm not going to go over a lot of time with this, but I just want you to know that this is an example, and this is the actual incident command structure for this two-week period. There are several known locations of focus for this 120-day period. The known locations, as we sit today, the 2,000 block of North Golden State, the 500 block of South First Street, the 1,400 block of West Main, the 600 block of West Glenwood, and the 4,000 block of North Golden State near Taylor Court. We're also going to focus on city parks, downtown, and business districts. Now, the first two, 2,000 block of North Golden State and the 500 block of South First Street, those encampments were on Union Pacific Railroad property. Just as we were starting to develop this plan, we had been working with Union Pacific, and they knew that at some point, they were going to deal with their own property, but they did it before we developed this plan. So a couple of days before this plan was put together, maybe a week before this plan was put together, the 2,000 block of North Golden State and the 500 block of South First Street, Union Pacific, as a property owner, dealt with those two pieces of property on their own. Now, the police department accompanied them, but they have their own police officers. They have their own staff. They have their own contractors for equipment removal. So those two locations, as we sit today, are just going to be monitored. They're not something that our staff or this plan needs to deal with as proactively as the rest of them. So 1,400 block of West Main is the first location that this plan will deal with. Now, this is going to be about a seven-or-so-minute video that gives you a brief overview of each location and what it currently looks like today. This is the 1,400 block of West Main. As you're looking at the video, Planet Fitness is on the right side of the screen, and the railroad tracks and evergreen packaging is on the left side of the screen. The road that we're coming to right now is West Main, and this is now looking in a southern direction from West Main. Right near Planet Fitness. So what you're seeing here is a police officer body camera footage of the officers providing notice to those in the 1,400 block of West Main, right next to Planet Fitness, of the fact that they are trespassing on private property and need to remove themselves and their property by March 18. This notice, this first notice, was provided on March 9. So you can see that the paper is in the officer's hand and the date up at the top. This is March 9 of 2021. Next location is North Golden State, up on the north end of town, near Taylor Court. So it's past, it's north of Christopherson. The next location is the 600 block of West Glenwood, in between Lander and Glenwood. That's looking at Highway 99 southbound, up at the top.
It looked like that, but it'll happen. It's clean.
Thank you, Liz. And the last one is First Street. This is before the cleanup and after the cleanup. This is actually on the day that the Union, that's a Union Pacific Railroad police officer on the right side of the screen that will come into view in a minute. So this is actually on the day of the cleanup, and this encampment is clean. There's no more encampment currently on the property of Union Pacific. And just a little bit of footage of after the cleanup. There's still some vehicles there, but those are Union Pacific vehicles and contractors that Union Pacific engaged to clean the area up, but there is a significant visible difference after the two-day cleanup. And again, this was private property and Union Pacific initiated cleanup. So as the city manager mentioned, there are going to be costs associated with the 120-day emergency operation. We've separated those costs into three major categories. The first category is the city operation. This is an estimated forecasted cost of operations based on seven days of work, essentially. So since this is an emergency situation, I don't want anyone to think that these are final costs, or we did the best that we could to get our best estimate forecasted cost. We are estimating the city's expenses for the city work that's being done through contractors and staffing costs and supplies and dumpsters and things that the city will do, $169,000 itemized in the categories that you see there. The city of Turlock cannot do this alone. We are going to need our partners to help us with this. Now, I see Liz is in the audience. Liz and Helping Hands has done a lot of good work, and we appreciate the work that Helping Hands has done. Turlock Gospel Mission is also doing good work, as well as We Care, Salvation Army, United Samaritans, lots of community effort, and we appreciate it. The Turlock Gospel Mission is willing to increase their capacity for housing homeless individuals on an emergency basis for this 120-day period. They plan to do that more permanently, perhaps at some point in the future, but to accommodate this emergency action by the city. The estimated cost for them to engage in that activity later this week, perhaps, $190,000, The same thing with We Care. We Care is willing to take steps to increase their capacity to shelter the homeless and provide other services. Their estimated cost is $139,000. Again, this 169 for the city, 190 for Turlock Gospel Mission, and 139 for We Care, which is a total of $498,417, is an estimate, and it's on an emergency basis for this 120-day period.
Chief, can I interrupt you just for a minute?
Yes.
Would you mind sharing with the city council and the community just the quick math that we did a half an hour before this council meeting, the estimated cost if we were able to locate all of the unsheltered homeless individuals that we have given count to several times in the last four to six weeks? What the, and I know you don't like being pinned down without the ability to, you know, really review your work or our work, so I'll take the hit on this one if it's wrong, but could you just share that with the council, please?
I can. As part of this emergency action that the city manager took on Sunday, we have made a request for an emergency allocation of 200 additional beds through the Office of Emergency Services. They are attempting to fill that request. They are attempting to fill that request and in fact, right before this meeting, I got a phone call from OES advising me that they have some of the beds currently secured and they're still working on the rest of them. So we're making an assumption that we need 200, that's the request that has been made, 200 additional beds. To allow for that 200 additional bed space at $190,000 for Turlock Gospel Mission and $139,000 for We Care, if you add those two numbers together, divide it by 120 days during the course of this emergency action, and then divide that number by 200 people, that Face ID doesn't work with a mask on. It's $13.71 per person per day to provide adequate bed space for 200 additional people. If you add the 190 plus the 140, divide it by the number of days, divide it by the number of people, $13.71 per person per day to provide for that capacity. Is that what you were looking for, Mr. Manager? Okay. Okay, so 1400 West Main, in between Planet Fitness and Evergreen Packaging, is private property. The owner of that private property has given the city of Turlock permission to clean the property and to enforce trespassing laws. They have advised us that nobody is allowed to be on their property. So what we have done today in green is Tuesday, March 16th. So starting up at the top, on Tuesday, March 2nd, the city first offered services in a documented fashion to those present at 1400 West Main. And those services include mostly county services because the city doesn't have these types of services. So we, again, partnered with the county to come out and these different agencies on March 2nd, March 9th, March 11th, and again, today on March 16th, included, at least on one of those days, D-Rail, which is Disability Resources Agency for Independent Living. It's help with disability resources and getting social security numbers and working with adult protective services and so on. The Community Services Agency, CSA, which includes services like Medi-Cal, EBT, childcare, and cash aid. Telecare, which is mental health services. CHS, which is the Center for Human Services, that includes youth services, drug and alcohol, mental health and family resources. HAT, which is Housing Assistance Team through Turning Point. Golden Valley Medical, and BHRS, Behavioral Health and Recovery Services. So each one of those agencies have, at our request, visited the 1400 West Main location either on one or all of the days of March 2nd, March 9th, March 11th, and again, today, March 16th. Those are the things that we've done in advance of this special city council meeting today and the anticipated first day of the cleanup, which is Thursday, March 18th. So backing up from today in green, you can see on Sunday, March 14th, the city manager proclaimed a local emergency. The following day, which was yesterday, Monday, March 15th, the city provided at least two large dumpsters on the property. For those that have been given notice that want to optionally remove their property and place it in a dumpster, it is provided for them. Today, county services came out and provided services again and notices were posted again today. The special city council meeting is today. Advancing two days from now, if the city council approves this action tonight, we're prepared to engage in a cleanup effort with proper notices being provided 10 days before this on March 18th. We anticipate it will take two days for a contractor to clean the area, so that would be March 18th and March 19th. Once the area is clean, we will then bring in experts to evaluate and ensure that no environmental health and hazards exist, and then we will fence the area. From that day forward, we will monitor to make sure that there is no illegal trespassing on the private property and then we will start to develop the next two-week plan. So with that, that concludes my presentation. Just to summarize, the action before you today is a request from staff to adopt a resolution ratifying the proclamation of a local emergency and adopt a resolution appropriating the funds. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Questions for Chief Williams?
Yes, Councilmember Larson.
First of all, thank you so much for the report. But I do have some questions. I have a few of them, so bear with me.
Okay. I got my pen ready.
Okay. And just some of them are just reaffirming the information you already said, but just to be really, really clear. So the 200 beds, we believe that that is enough to service every individual we've identified that's in need, 200 additional beds.
So in response to that question, through the years of 2013 through 2018, the point-in-time count in Stanislaus County indicated an average of 187 homeless individuals right here in Turlock, on average through those years. That was 2013 through 2018. For 2019 and 2020, the average of those two years increased from 187 to 239. The count in 2011, it's usually conducted in January, was suspended this year because of COVID. So the last accurate count that we have is between, if you average 2018 and 2019, it's 239 beds. So our emergency allocation of 200 beds plus the 49 permitted beds that currently exist with our two shelters is adequate to accommodate the needs.
Okay. Thank you. And you mentioned that coordinating with the county, so I understand that the county teams have been out even before this effort, you know, working with, with these populations. So will we be continually coordinating with those teams, those on-the-ground teams to not duplicate efforts and kind of try to make sure that we're there at the same day as they are or calendar with them, essentially?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for the questions. Absolutely necessary. This is not a one-time go-in-and-offer services and then we're done. It is going to be on, again, this effort is to provide services to individuals, so yes.
Okay. Okay. And so once these individuals are able to get connected to the shelters, I know we talked about some different time marks that we will have different types of plans, 36 week, or 36 month. So, but just to ensure that we aren't, to ensure confidence that we won't be back here again, what will, what will we be doing, probably in coordination with other jurisdictions, to plan for that transition from the shelters to transitional housing, mental health services, other programs like that?
As the manager said, this is a two-pronged approach and with the 36 months that you mentioned, I don't have that plan in concrete right now. I can tell you that there will be a focused effort among city staff to ensure that on day 121, when this emergency is over, that we're not left out in the open. There, there needs to be a plan in place and staff will develop a plan so that between day 121 and the 36-month period, there is at least some type of coordination and cooperation with those agencies and service providers to ensure that services are there.
Mr. Hampton? Yes, I'd like to also add to that, Councilmember Larson. Clearly, you're now referring to either intermediate or transitional housing and it is a national problem, but in California, it is a state emergency. Because of the cost of housing, it's near impossible to create transitional housing to the degree that California currently needs, and that's been acknowledged by the governor and every state official. I think probably by every county official as well. So Turlock is not in this alone. The, the county itself is challenged with the same thing. So as we put together the team that will work on this 24- to 36-month strategy, it's my vision that it will include representatives from the county because they truly bring resources that the city does not have. We can certainly address the homeless, the unsheltered homeless to the best degree that we can, but in reality, those health and human services are provided by your county government, as you know. So I'm saying this to you for the benefit of the audience, I know you know this, but those services come from the county. But we are going to roll up our sleeves and get involved to make sure that we do have a plan, so we just don't walk away from it. And two years from now, you're right back here having the same conversation. And candidly, that seems to be, to date, that seems to be the cycle that's been happening in California, not just in this county or just in our community.
Thank you. Last two, forgive me. So will we have the legal grounds to hold these individuals accountable to our municipal
Everybody's looking at me, so I will, I will answer that.
Chief Hampton?
And I'm going to ask our city attorney to jump in here and interrupt me at any time. So obviously, this is not an enforcement strategy, but it does have an accountability component, which includes enforcement. It is not the only accountability component, but the goal is to avail to the homeless population resources that they may or may not know is available. And for those that know it's available and choose not to accept it, we are there to help them understand and explore their options to what, how they plan to avoid violating the ordinances here in the city of Turlock to prevent this situation from happening again. That may well be identifying family members that we can validate are willing to accept them and assist them. And I want to be clear when I say validate. I'm not suggesting that we're putting somebody on a bus or on an airplane or in a city vehicle and driving them somewhere and letting them off. That's not what I'm talking about. If we can validate that a community, or I'm sorry, a family member is willing to accept them back, whether it's in another state, we will get them there. If we can validate that and work with the law enforcement agency in that jurisdiction to make sure that they get to the resource that they need. But ultimately, yes, there will be a level of accountability for those that engage in violations of the Turlock Municipal Code. And many of these violations amount to misdemeanors. And so is it, is it our goal to utilize the criminal justice system? We already know that doesn't work. California has been through this for at least a decade. We know you cannot arrest your way out of homelessness and that's not what we're here proposing tonight. But I can assure you that the city will find itself confronted with individuals who do not want to live in a homeless shelter. There are, for some of them, there are barriers, as you know, whether it's pets, children, so on and so forth. But what I can tell you is, we've explored and I believe that we have the ability to avail resources to overcome many of those barriers. Whether it's a family that does not want to be separated, we will resolve that problem. We will work with the county, we will work with the state, we will work with our city council. And we've factored some of those potential costs into our forecasted budget. But again, at the end of the day, there will be a percentage of people who are not going to take direction, they're not going to accept help. They like to identify themselves as what we know as the nomad lifestyle and that is a lifestyle that has been loved and lived by many, many people. But what we see in Turlock today is not a nomad lifestyle. It is a dangerous lifestyle. It's dangerous for the people that are either choose to live it or are forced to live it for reasons not in their control, but it's also unsafe for the community. And I'm not going to get into some of the graphic details that we have documented that involves things that, that could seriously challenge the health and safety of our community. So I share that with you because I, I don't want you to be misinformed that we don't have an enforcement approach. We do. It's at the end of the list and it's certainly not something that we want to do, but if we can't get someone to comply with laws, which are developed as social norms in this, in this country, and without them, you know, we, we really would be spinning our wheels. We would get nowhere without accountability. Hopefully, I answered that. I didn't hear the attorney interrupt me.
No, absolutely. Manager Hampton, I appreciate it. Last question, just for the group. So we are confident as a city of Turlock, through a legal lens, enforcement lens, and administration lens, that we, and also with coordination of inventory of our efforts and our available resources with our nonprofits, that we have the adequate services, beds, and resources the second we start implementing this plan.
So my response to be, to that would be, before any enforcement action is taken by the police department, all of that is going to be in place. Okay?
That's exactly, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Chief. Will the copies of your action plans and the copies of the slides be available to the council and the public on the website or?
I would defer to the manager or the attorney.
At the appropriate time, oops, sorry. I'm getting my fingers mixed up here. At the appropriate time, yes, it will be available. It's, it's still staff work, so it's not in its file format and there will be some confidential information contained in those that we are not permitted by law to release, but we will redact it and make sure we put out as much information as possible once we have a final, final documents.
Great. Thank you so much.
Other questions for Chief?
Okay, then let's open it to the public that are seated here first and then we'll go online after.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we have not had public participation yet, I'll go ahead and introduce some information regarding public comment.
Please.
So for members of the public, they will be given an opportunity to address counsel concerning items that have been described in the notice for this meeting. For the members of the public who are participating in person, we ask that you please raise your hand once the mayor opens public comment and before she closes public comment. For members of the public participating remotely, we ask that they please use the raise-your-hand feature on your screen or dial *9 from your telephone keypad once the mayor opens public comment and before she closes public comment. Members of the public participating in person will be called upon first and then we will move to those who are participating remotely. For those who are participating remotely, we will hear an automated prompt indicating their line has been unmuted and that is when their comment period will begin. Lastly, we request members to choose to address the council to please state their first and last name in the event that any follow-up is needed, however, this is not mandatory.
Thank you. And so for those, we haven't had, this year, we haven't had any public meetings. It's a three minutes and if there are questions that you're asking, I'll write them down. So just carry on with your three-minute conversation and then at the end, most likely, Chief Williams will address those for us. So let's start on this side of your, anybody, would you like to speak?
Yeah.
Sure. Come on up.
Okay, I'm on, I'm on West Main.
I'm sorry?
I'm on West Main. I'm on the home-
Okay, can you bring the microphone?
I'm on the homeless camp of West Main. And what are people supposed to do in the meantime? These services, they come out and offer this service and stuff, and then we're being moved, where are we being moved to? No options have been, these services all take time. I talked to the housing lady and everything else and those things take months, months. And there's a lot of people that aren't going to go into the shelters because they do have pets. They do, we're couples. I have a boyfriend, we're not married, but we'd like to stay together, you know, because go through this together, you know? So those things are, you know, going to be really hard for us to do. And then shelters have time limits. You have to be there at a certain time and you have to leave at a certain time. How about if I have a job? How if I get a job? I'm not quite capable of getting my own place, but how do I get in in time so I have a place to sleep when I get off work? Okay? And by now, it's like, you're complaining about how messy and how terrible it is. I was under the understanding that the county was given so much money in the state of California for the fact that during the COVID, we were supposed to have rest, anything over 10 people, any encampment over 10 people. We're supposed to get restrooms and wait to clean up and talk about the COVID. I've never seen none of it. None of it. You know, none of it was issued to none of us. And if we had bathrooms and a garbage dumpster, I tried to order them up for West Main and we couldn't because we don't have an address. Well, I couldn't have porta potties come in. I figured if we have porta potties, we'd all pitch in, you know, a couple bucks, you know, use the bathroom. They won't do it because we don't have an address. You know, weren't given no opportunity to be right. You know, we're given no opportunity to be right at all, you know? I challenged any of you to come stay a week with us, on the street with us, and see what it's like. It's not, it's not someplace you want to be. And then that puts us through the point where mentally, we feel defeated, you know, because like all these services take time. What are you doing in the meantime? You just feel like you're kicked to the curb. Then they come in, the stuff that you have, your tents, your clothing, your, gets taken away, and you start all over. And then the point that you have to, every day, it's like, you're challenged to find food, shelter, the things you basically need, how you go look for a job, how you apply for these things. When I go to, go to where there's food. You know, a lot of people don't have a way, so they walk, takes hours, or whatever. You know, I see the community, they really take care of us. They come out and feed us and, you know, really help. But there's a basic place, barriers in the way. I have tried, I've been homeless for 15 years. I have worked my butt off to get unhomeless, and it's just frustrating. It really is. It's how you go to work without a shower? How do you do all that stuff?
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Can you hear anybody else that wants to speak yet? Go ahead. Please just share your name and if you can speak into the microphone. And again, each one's three minutes.
My name's Richard Locke, and I live at 20 or the 1400 West Main. I've been there for close to two years now. And as far as Turlock Gospel Mission and We Care, to give them a quarter of a million dollars is such a waste of money. Turlock Gospel Mission does nothing for the homeless. Their main objective is drug and alcohol recovery. They do not house homeless. They give you a cardboard dinner at night, that's it. We Care, men's shelter, you can't bring pets in. I have three cats. Does nothing for the women. It's a huge waste of money, huge waste of money. Encampments are going to happen, and I was there for up to two years, close to two years, a year and a half by myself, no problems whatsoever. If we get supplied dumpsters, bathrooms prior to, it'd become in a mess, and, you know, the mess won't be there, the health concerns won't be there. I never stayed on First Street. I didn't stay on Taylor Road, and what was the other one? I didn't stay over by Tur, or, what's the?
Glenwood.
Glenwood? Stayed at, none of those camps. Nasty, they need it to be torn down, but you guys let it get that way. You let it get that way. Main Street, nothing like that, nothing like that. The first part of that video on Main Street was taken on the back half of the property, which is a whole different group of people, and, I can't think, isn't that railroad property back there?
It's all the same.
It's all, oh, okay. But completely different group of people. Once you get above the chainage fence, where you saw the motor homes and stuff like that, it looks nothing like the other camps. I went around daily, telling people to take out the trash and stuff. I went up and talked to Kathy the first time she got there. You know, it is what we make it, and they let it make, or they let it get that way without providing dumpsters, bathrooms, just the basic necessities. And, you know, just go keep getting that way if they allow it. And as far as 200 beds, where are those beds going to go? I mean, where are you going to put 200 beds at? There's nowhere in Turlock to put 200 beds. Since we have to move by the 18th, I went behind Kelso's Wrecking Yard, which is probably 15 acres owned by the city. On my way out, I was met by code enforcement and a police officer. They took down my name, said, I said, well, go to camp here, it's in their city property. Yes, it is, but the city of Turlock doesn't want you here, neither do we.
Thank you, sir.
From now.
Liz? Three minutes.
Two minutes. Okay, my thing is, you, they're coming out on the 18th. If you think all these homeless are going to go into the shelters, ain't going to happen. Because I don't see what the difference is. You, you put them into a shelter, you wake them up in the morning, you throw them out in the rain, in the cold, at least when they got their tents, they're warm, they got their buckets where they can go to the restroom. They, they can't even go to Taco Bell or anywhere, Jack in the Box to use the restroom because nobody lets them go. So until you get something or somewhere where they can have, where they can be in the daytime, we know the day, the ham center's down, but you need to replace that. You can't just say, right now, we want you up, gone, and move. That's stressful. And I know, because I deal with this 24/7, at night, the morning, I get calls, people go to my house, you know, and the way you guys are pushing them out, and what happened to First Street was totally, that was just wrong. Could you move in one day? Because half of that camp had notice, the other half didn't. That notice went up at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock, and then when they put that notice up, they only had till the morning, when we were trying to get their stuff, where we were going to put their things was closed. You know, there's no way. So until you find something that you can have for them in the daytime, restrooms, and I know that the restrooms are going to have to be monitored, because it's not all the homeless that messes it up. We have some that mess it up, and we need to monitor it. But when we did it inside of the mission, Gospel Mission and the property, we monitored it, and it was okay. No garbage cans out there, of course they're going to have garbage. You know, we go out there, we pick it up, we don't mind helping them, but you guys can't just stress them out and go out there and say, we're throwing you out, you got this thing, either you do it or you don't, or we're going to arrest you, and then you're going to go to the next camp, and they're just going to keep moving and moving. You need to come up with a program that's going to work for them, not for you. You need to have a program where they can grow their own vegetables, have a place that they can have their dogs, because I seen that thing right there that said, We Care, little pods for men with their dogs. What kind of crap's that? And like she's talking about boyfriends and girlfriends, they don't want to be separated. And because they're married, they don't want to be separated. They're still family. All these people out there are family. You know, you get your good apples, your bad apples. Well, you're going to figure that out, but you need to do something where you're going to be able to keep them and bring them in. You're not offering anything, you're telling them, this is the way it is, this is what we're going to do, and you will be arrested if you don't do it. Yet, that's what, that's what you're doing. But you're going to throw them out in the morning, and that's okay. No breakfast, no nothing. And remember, Saturdays, Sundays, they don't get food.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you, Liz.
Someone else? Mr. Breidgum, come on up. He's been sitting in the back quiet.
Who wouldn't want to sit way in the back? They don't want to be in the front. Wow, it's been a year. That's pretty amazing. Actually, I feel pretty blessed being able to be here, because it was a little less than a year ago that I didn't think I'd be able to walk up here, and even if I could speak, no one would be able to understand anything I said. Okay, so I'm thankful to be here. Couple questions. Okay, we talk about Turlock Gospel Mission and We Care expanding their capacity so you can have 200 beds, additional beds. Are we looking at any of the HEAP funds? If I, maybe this is not applicable, but I remember that Maren Pitt said we would have between $1 million and $2 million that had to be spent by April 30th. So I'm wondering if any of that can be used, okay? And there was the property directly north of Turlock Gospel Mission that was purchased using federal funds that the city granted them in December. That's 2,000 square feet. The top, the second floor was finished, and on the rest of the property, you know, I mean, there's space there, okay? And so I was wondering if any of that might be used. I almost hate to mention this, but the armory, is anyone thinking about potentially using the armory for some of the beds? I don't think it will hold 200 beds, but it could hold whatever it could hold. So also, if I am reading between the lines correctly, it kind of sounds like what Turlock Gospel Mission in particular might be doing, and We Care also, is perhaps renting or leasing another building. So if we could use maybe HEAP funds for something more permanent, as opposed to a temporary thing, that, I have a question if that's possible now. Oh, and also, the last thing would be your IAPs, EAPs. So there's going to be metrics that you're, you're taking. Will that, will the metrics be available to the public so that, and the council, of course, so that the council and the public would know if we're being successful? Okay? Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Puffer?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions and some comments. In the press to be this morning, they said that the men's shelter is down to 40 beds, and Turlock Gospel Mission said they could set up beds in their dining room as long as the fire marshal approves. And I'm wondering how many beds the fire marshal would approve, and if that plus the 40 beds is anywhere close to 200. Mr. Breidgum seems to have more information on possible places to put them, but that's what I had gathered. On this, on your budget and stuff like this, you had fencing and site security for $30,000. And I'm going to assume that that's $30,000 is going to go around private property on West Main? Or we, do we get to bill the property manager for the $30,000 of improvements or something to keep it from being used again? You have staffing costs of $12,000. I guess I'm concerned, if, if we're already driving our understaffed staff, that they're making typos because they're working 10 hours on a Sunday, and you're saying that all departments are going to be in on this, what's that going to do for the rest of Turlock? Are parts going to be neglected because we're doing cleanup? Are we going to have less patrols for fire and police because they haven't put so much attention to this? Are we going to have larger staff turnover because these guys are having to work 60, 70 hours a week? I think Turlock right now is completely ill-prepared for this project. However, we've initiated it. I think you really need to get back to your roots and get department heads, because we have no department heads other than parks and recreation. Everybody's interim. We need to get permanent department heads, people who are going to be there for a while to work out plans, and then move forward. Thank you.
Anybody else? Hand up? Go ahead, come on up.
My name is Gerard Chan. I believe about We Care, we got kicked out on the 21st of February because one of my friends is like, he's a veteran, he's 67 years old, he got heart problem, and they say, if he don't do the tour, he got no bed. And they kicked him out. So we got together with the other two families, go by numbers to safety, so they, if he leave, we all leave. So she labored us or banded us. She said, you guys are bullying tactic. I said, what do you mean bullying tactic? She said, I don't have to explain to you. And she walked away. And we still have a stop hour in the room, and she said, we need to get stopped. She said, no, you're not allowed to go in the room. After intake, our staff will take stop hour for you. You stand by the curb and wait there. And we was like cold at night, on Sunday night, on the 21st, and we couldn't sleep. Our three of us stick together, and the 22nd, even colder. We couldn't sleep. And we got kicked out, because I was like, it's not more likely, we call it false labor. It's like, a lot of people don't do the work, and they say they put them together at the roommate, but I said, like, because you don't work, you got to stick together when two, two persons in one room. And after stop, they say, like, you don't work, you got no way back, no bed. And told you, my friends, they like, you can have the bed tonight, I'll see you in the morning. That's why I said, if we leave, we both leave, we all three of us leave. So I said, like, more likely, we had to listen to what they said, do what they tell us to do. We're not allowed to say anything or complain. That's all I wanted to say, because we haven't had a place to stay, but we put the money together, we bought a car, and we sleep, find a place to park the car, we sleep at night, in the morning, and we were to find some, get some food. We left since 21st of February. We haven't, we went back to We Care, it was cold at night, we couldn't stand it. Maybe we had some hypothermia or maybe pneumonia. And my friend, he's a veteran, he's 67 years old, heart problem, and she told him, he had to do this, otherwise he got no bed. He said, see you in the morning, you have no bed tonight. And she kicked him out. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just have one question I'd like to say.
I'm sorry, we'll try and get it back from there. Is there anybody left here? Because once we, everybody gets three minutes, and then we're going to go to the Zoom. Is there anybody else that wants to say it now? Okay, let's go ahead to Zoom then, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The first caller, I have the name Miles.
Caller, are you there?
Mayor, I can try to disable and then enable one more time. Miles, you're on the line?
Go ahead, caller. Let's try another and come back.
Miles, are you there? Okay, Mayor, the next caller, I have the name Kirby.
Mr. Kirby?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, council members. Thank you for recognizing me. Yeah, I guess a couple of things. First, I just want to thank the staff for all the hard work over the weekend. I think that from the city manager down through the entire staff, just, I've seen a tremendous effort to come up with a plan, and I just, I just want to say thank you because I know that it was a personal sacrifice for many. I also just want to say, I've been listening to all the, all the other comments so far, and so far, I haven't disagreed with anybody. You know, I think that the issues that are brought up by my friends around the encampment, I don't disagree with. I think that the challenge is, though, you know, I think often, we are talking about two different things. We're talking about what we would like in a home, and it's often not the reality in a shelter, unfortunately. And I would be the first person to agree to that. Shelter life is not ideal by any stretch of the imagination. It's hard, and it's hard for a lot of reasons. But the, but the truth is that it exists, not because we want to force you to live there, it exists as a safety, and it exists for folks that are really at a point where they have no other option. And the community has said, hey, we want to make sure that there's a place for you to have a warm bed and a meal. And so I, you know, as much as I agree with all the comments, I just want to remind people that this is not about me as the CEO, this is not about my staff, even though they work there just as hard as the city staff does. even though they work there just as hard as the city staff does. This is about our community and the response that they've made to their neighbors when they see their neighbors in need. And you're right, it's not ideal. It's not home. But I think what I'm hearing from everybody that I'm working with over the last few days, as we've been talking about this, is a commitment to seeing people be sheltered. I think the city manager said that earlier tonight. I've only known Gary for a short time. But again, I think that when he talks, I believe what he says. I think that everybody I've worked with, as we've been discussing this, has been honest and has done this from a position of trying to help people. And I'm... Anyway, to be honest, I guess I'm just trying to say, I'm thankful for the leadership. I'm thankful for where we're headed. I believe in this 36-month plan. Or that I believe that this 36-month plan is going to be helpful for our community.
Mr. Kirby. Sorry, our three minutes is up, sir. Thank you.
You bet.
Next caller.
The next caller, I have the name Gil.
Gil.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Barely. A little louder, please.
Okay. My tablet's full volume, so I don't know. I'm all the way up, so.
Lean in a little bit for us, please.
I'm on top of the thing right now.
There you go.
My tablet is at full volume, so I'll just try to get through this real quick. I've got to run. So a couple of things that, yeah, have been addressed. One of the main problems we've had in the past is lack of restroom space. I don't see anything like that being addressed in this plan. 200 beds is very good, except that I still don't know where they're going to... I'm not quite sure how they're going to put them in there. I want to applaud the staff and acting chief, city manager, everybody for the work they're doing. But I'm not sure this is really going to go... I mean, $500,000. Can't we take some of our city property? We've got several lots around town. What can we do with that $500,000 on one of our city properties? We could put in some kind of home shelters where they could actually stay and don't have to worry about coming in and coming out at time limits. $13.71 is great for, you know, per person. That's cool. But one of the things, I look at the budget. I'm looking at $26,000 for administrative overhead for the Gospel Mission. If you 120 days, that's $233 a day. You go 90 days, that's $297 a day just for administrative costs. That, I don't know. That's pretty good pay. I think it's a little something we need to look at before we start giving our money away. I'm glad you guys are working on this again. I know, Mayor, the last couple of years, you told me that homelessness was that city problem. Well, I'm glad to see we're getting back on it. And I just think you need to look at this and maybe consider spending that $500,000 on a place for the people to stay with the facilities they need without being worried about time limits of coming in and going out, checking in, checking out. You have to do this, you have to do that. Just what they need is a place to stay with facilities to manage the life. So that's all I have to say for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
The next caller, I have the last name Jimenez.
Caller, Jimenez.
Yes, thank you very much. So I have a couple of questions. First of all, I think some of the people who spoke from the audience with lived experience are good members to be on the committee for the 120-day program and for the 36-month program. So get their names before they leave. My question is, could a homeless person stay in a shelter for 120 days? Since there's going to be beds available? And then second, I think permanent housing and supportive housing has to be part of the 36-month solution. Vocational training is very important for folks that are in the shelter. But more importantly, is a job once they get done with that vocational training. And in regards to other people being on the committee, I think if you had some watchdog organization on the committee, like the ACLU, that would be a really good start because you don't want to get sued by them like the city of Fresno did. And as far as family members, I think a lot of homeless people have burnt their bridges with homeless folks. I had a saying that mental illness is in the community. And so therefore, it has to be a community solution. It's true for homelessness also. Homeless people are in our community, and it has to be a community solution. I also would like to think, if you guys ever did a survey on the homeless people in Turlock, I think you would find that the majority of the homeless population are from Turlock or from our county. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez. Next caller.
Mayor, the next caller, I'm going to try Miles again.
All right. Caller, Miles, are you there? Caller, Miles, can you hear us? Try another.
The next caller, I have the last four digits, 1274.
Mr. Treewiler.
Yes, council staff, Turlock citizens, Mel Treewiler. The best way to address this issue is to consult an expert. And I have an expert here to explain the solution to the issue of homelessness. I'm using my time, so you listen to the expert. So here's the expert. It may take me a second here to get going.
Well, the good news is, we actually know how to solve homelessness. It's really an issue of resources.
Margot Kuchel, UCSF professor of medicine and the director of the UCSF Center for Vulnerable Populations. With the rest of the program, I'll be speaking with her about what solutions are out there and why she believes we know how to make them happen.
For people who have significant behavioral health disabilities, people who struggle with mental health problems or substance use problems, we have an extraordinarily effective model that has been proven time and again to work really well for this population. That's something called Housing First. What it really means is Housing First, permanent supportive housing. What that means is subsidized housing so that people don't need to pay more than 30% of their income on the housing with voluntary supportive services. So these are things like case management, drug and alcohol services, mental health services, other vocational services, other services that are offered on a voluntary basis. This type of arrangement has been shown to be really effective at housing those who have the most significant behavioral disabilities. Just about everyone can be successfully housed. Many other people who are homeless really just need some financial help. It's not a question of a lot of bells and whistles or substance use counseling or anything like that. Really, what they need to be housed successfully is simply housing that they can afford. To do that, vouchers can play a very big role. And so if we can create yet a federal voucher system where they exist, that will help tremendously. Right now, only one in four households across this country who meet the very strict requirement to receive one of those vouchers actually gets one. It's a very limited resource. If we could free those up, that would help a lot. Some people may just need a short-term boost. There are some people who really need a first month's rent, last month's rent, you know, some living expenses, and they can get a fresh start and be housed again.
I want to talk about a study that you co-authored last year looking at the effectiveness of one of these intervention programs. It's known as Project Welcome Home. It housed a number of people in Santa Clara County over a number of years and ultimately found that 86% of participants that received housing were able to stay in housing throughout nearly the entire study duration. So really striking figures in terms of the effectiveness of giving people homes and seeing that they keep homes.
Mr. Treewiler, thank you for that. We're going to go on.
Folks in the program also...
Thank you. Next caller.
Thank you, Mayor. The next caller has identified themselves with our Zoom link. The last four digits are 9186.
9186. Hello, caller. Caller, are you there? Okay. Want to try Mr. Miles again?
Next caller, I have Miles.
Three's a charm. Miles, are you there? Three's not a charm. Okay. Are there any other out there?
Thank you, Mayor. The next caller, I have the last name Kamara.
Caller, Kamara.
Breaker, breaker, 10-4. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
What's your tone? Okay. I never know when you guys pick me up on the audio. All right, Mayor, City Council. I'll try to make this quick, whip it out, because I know I got less than three now. Michael Kamara calling here, concerned Turlock resident. I read about tonight's agenda item, this proposed $500,000 homeless mitigation project in a Mnesto B article, right? So the details that were provided in that Mnesto B article, I believe it was March 15th yesterday. This $500 package would fund four months of various types of outreach activities and expanding shelter capacity through the purchase of three 64-square-foot shelters that would presumably be placed on either vacant lots near We Care or Turlock Gospel Mission or someplace out there. The issue of shelter expansion is concerning in that Liz Padilla, who spoke earlier tonight, she's there in person. She's a local homeless advocate and a community representative. And she's repeatedly stated that there is, to this very day, current vacancies at the shelters. They are not at capacity. This is due to a variety of reasons, right? We discussed some of this this evening already. These populations don't often care for shelter rules and regulations. And so purposely choose to squat elsewhere throughout town. So roughly two weeks ago, during the livestreamed encampment cleanup over the railroad tracks on First and D Street, Liz again reiterated this point on Turlock City News that many of the people, many of the people, the majority of the people choose not to house themselves in the shelter space that's available to them. So I would ask the city council to reject this emergency proclamation as it's proposed and modify the $500,000 spending plan. Rather than throwing good money, Turlock taxpayer dollars, at a non-transparent project crafted with virtually no public input, I ask that you first hold a town hall-type meeting to allow members of the immediate neighborhood and business operators downtown to provide feedback. The troublesome issue that plagued the last city council revolved around a lack of transparency and public participation, the lack of it. So let's be inclusive. Let's be honest. Let's be transparent and inviting. Please do not make the same mistakes that the last city council made. Last week, the president signed the American Rescue Act of 2021. It was one of those COVID stimulus bills. I think this one boasted something like $1.9 trillion of relief. An element of that relief bill was an earmarked $130 billion of funding for local governments. And so I'm sure members of Turlock city staff are expecting to receive a certain amount of federal aid money in the coming weeks. I wonder if in the anticipation of those bailout funds is in some way motivating Turlock city staff now.
Mr. Kamara, your time is up, sir.
I got you. Thank you. Thank you much. Cheers.
Next caller.
The next caller, I have the last four digits, 5284.
Caller, 5284. Caller, 5284, are you there?
Hello. This is John Miles. And I'm the Luddite of our family. Anyway, I would like to commend the city manager, Hampton, and the city staff for initiating this action. And I'm for it. I believe that we needed to take action to reduce harm within that population. And given today's high cost of living, especially housing, we need to focus on shelter and supportive services, which they've done. I also have a question like Gil's care. Are we going to be able to provide outhouses or some kind of houses for urinary and waste and showers? I think homeless are going to need those things, just like I would under those circumstances. And I think we can't police our way out of this and/or arrest our way out of this. And we keep pushing things over to the place to resolve. So I thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller.
Thank you, Mayor. The last caller is one of the callers that we tried before who has identified themselves with our Zoom link. The last four digits is 9186.
Caller, 9186. Hello, caller, are you there?
They're not going to let me talk.
Go ahead. We can hear you. Caller, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Hello?
Yes.
Hi.
Hi.
Good evening, council and mayor. We've been here too many times before. I've been working in this area for about two decades. We've played Hide the Homeless numerous times. We're playing Hide the Homeless again. You've got to develop something that will actually work, just not short-term decisions that make it appear that the problem is gone. I'm so disappointed again. And I apologize to the city staff for having to do this again because those who have been here have already gone through this several times already. So I don't know what to tell you, but this is not the way out. It has never proven it when you've tried it in the past. I'm sorry for those that it will hurt. And I'm sorry for the cavalier way many of you talk about it. So that's all I have to say. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Next caller.
Thank you, Mayor. At this time, there are no other callers.
All right. I will close the public comment. Chief, are you ready to start answering these questions?
I will sure do my best. So thank you for inviting me back up. I was taking notes as the speakers in the room and the callers were making comments. The first question that I noted was jobs. What if a person has a job and there are time limits on when an individual shelter provider gives rules on entry? And I've spoken with both We Care and Turlock Gospel Mission. And both are willing with advance notice to, on an individual basis, if somebody has a job, while they do have a specific window of time that they expect somebody to come in, they can make arrangements if they know in advance. Second question, where are you going to put 200 beds? I'm not sure that I can answer that. There are ideas, and there are discussions in place involving MOUs not with the city of Turlock to provide for those. So as a city representative, I can tell you that those 200 beds are not intended to go on the property of We Care or Turlock Gospel Mission. They are intended to go elsewhere. Some of them will, but not the entire 200. The armory was brought up. That is not a part of this 120-day plan as we sit here today. Will the metrics be reported? Absolutely. Within the limits of the law and the information permissible to be released, it's my intent to release as much information, both to council and to the public as possible. I have budget, a question about the budget dealing with the administrative cost of one of the providers. So... So, um, the city amount is going to be strictly accounted for per aligned item budget, if it's approved. The amount for the providers could be done in two ways. It could be on a reimbursement basis, depending on the provider. If they spend the money upfront, they provide us an accounting of how they spent that money and it's within permissible uses. We then reimburse that amount. Or it could be advanced in increments. For example, we could advance a provider $10,000. They account for how they spent that $10,000. It's an appropriate use, we advance another 10. So there's multiple ways that we could do it, depending on the financial setup of the provider. Liz mentioned, uh, day center, the need for a day center shelter and restrooms. I absolutely agree. Mr. Kamara mentioned, uh, the need for a town hall meeting. Absolutely agree, that will most certainly be a part of the more longer-term 24 to 36-month plan. Did anybody else note a question that I didn't touch on?
So we have, um, the stay in, in the shelter for up to 120 days? I guess that would be for Mr. Kirby or?
It would be for the shelter providers.
Um, and then, um, let's see, showers and, and the additional showers or, or toilets or, or?
Yeah. So. I know that, um, the locations that are being considered by these providers to enter into an agreement to provide the additional bed space, have shower facilities, have restroom facilities. Those accommodations are in place, depending on which partner these individual providers end up agreeing to use.
And, um, if you could just parlay the, um, I believe Ms. Padilla talked about, they got one day notice for South First. Um, can you just reiterate who, that, that wasn't ours and that's why we're doing it differently?
I can, yes. I know that the police, the Turlock Police Department was advised on a Thursday that Union Pacific was going to come in on a Friday and clean up. I think I got my days right, that might have been a Wednesday and a Thursday, but one day notice to our police department that Union Pacific was coming in to deal with it. So the noticing of Golden State and First Street was completely at the discretion and at the direction of Union Pacific. I can tell you for the police department, for the Turlock Police Department specifically for this effort at 1400 West Main. We're intending to take the action on Wednesday, on Thursday of this week, which is the 18th. We first provided notice 10 days prior to that, on the ninth of March. And then again, on the 11th of March, and then again, today.
And I believe there's one other question Mr. Puffer asked in regard to recouping our costs, if it's a private property that we're fencing?
So the fencing costs and, and from the police department's perspective, and police is just one arm of the bigger picture of this, as everyone has said. There is no intent to enforce our way out of it, it can't be done. We're just the partner in the project. How the police can deal with public property versus private property are two different things. As it stands right now, and this may change depending on which property we deal with. If it is part of the 120-day plan, there is no expectation of reimbursement from the private property owner. For the services on that property or, or the activity on that property.
Okay. So as we start our dialogue, uh, primarily it's in your area, madam, so if you'd like to start your conversation? Please?
My goodness, where do you start? What an undertaking. Um, you know, if, if you live in Turlock and you've never walked through one of the encampments in Turlock. Well, the time is running out to do that, but folks, the living conditions that are in there, um, no one should have to live that way. Nobody. Um, it's not fair to anybody. And so I think by the action that we're trying to take in here tonight, it's, it's the city being responsive to a, a huge problem that we're having. And it, in, in being responsive, that includes addressing the substance use disorders and the underlying mental health issues that some of our unsheltered individuals have. The city is also being responsive to thousands, and I mean thousands of emails that the city has received in the last two years in regards to homeless encampments and, and the unsavory issues that come along with that. So to the individuals that are, that are, um, a little bit hung up, if you will, on the, on the $500,000 price tag. I don't want to look at that price tag if we sit here for another 12 or 18 months and not take more, uh, or swifter action. Because I believe that price tag can grow or, or even double just on the environmental issues alone that are, that are sitting outstanding currently in the city. And so everybody just needs to realize and, and keep it in a perspective. This is a fluid situation, okay? But the problem's only going to continue to grow if, if we don't do something with it. And, you know, for those of you that don't know, um, I've spent, oh, the last eight years of my life. Um, I have devoted a very large portion of my time to feeding the homeless and clothing the homeless and putting shoes on the homeless. I'm in these camps every week in my district. I know what's going on. I know that we cannot, like many have said in here tonight, we cannot police our way out of this, okay? And I don't think that our unsheltered homeless folks just need another meal. Because that's just a Band-Aid, if you will. And some people will go as far to say that that is an enablement, right? And so keep in mind, the situation is very fluid. And this is a temporary 120-day plan to kick us into gear for the long term. Folks, I understand that the homeless folks, they need clean clothes, they need a haircut, they need to learn how to fill out a job application, right? Because some of our homeless folks can't even walk in and apply for any position i- in a local business in their current state. We understand that, we recognize that. And as the chief indicated, my goodness, your work was phenomenal on this. Your I, your ICS structure was outstanding. I, I can't believe you, you did what you did and, and thank you for your hard work. But like you said, it, it's, it's something that we have to start somewhere. So this is the 120 days to, to, to get it into gear and get it going. Because we can't continue to sit and let people live in these conditions and in this way. And the mayor, my goodness, you put a lot of meetings in motion for me, you went to, uh, you did so much. And I don't, I don't think a lot of folks realize, um, that, and the City Manager, I can't, you know, I, I'll thank all of our city employees for their hard work. Um, but Chief Williams, you blew my socks off with what you, with what you put together. And it just goes to show you that when everybody puts their heads together, we can come up with some real solutions. But most importantly, when I, when I get an email or a phone call about a homeless issue, almost always somebody mentions an underlying substance use disorder and an underlying mental health or an underlying mental health disorder. And that's real. And I know, I don't think in the past, when the city has gone to address the homeless issues, that we've addressed those underlying issues. And that's what I think is different about this time versus next time. And if I, I'm done, but I just have to say thank you to that lady right there. Um, Liz Padilla from Helping Hands. People don't know it, she's got quite the cleanup, she's a street cleanup crew, folks. She uses her own money to go out and clean the garbage out of the camps. And she does her best to keep things tidy and, and clean. And Liz, we appreciate everything that you do, honey. Thank you.
Can I say one thing?
You have to ask her.
Just one, one quick second. Go ahead.
I just want everybody to know, Gospel Mission does have, came a long way, they do have NA classes. They have classes to teach you culinary, where you can take certification to cook. They teach you to wash clothes. They have a lot of programs. Uh, Gospel Mission came a long way. So Gospel Mission, to me, is, uh, going the right direction. That would be able to help a lot of homeless, because they need to learn how to re-wash clothes, cook their own food. They need to be involved in all of this that you're doing. To, to even using, if you want to fleece your bathrooms, or you need them to go do the vegetable thing. Use them, hire them, to get jobs, to train them. You could save money by having the homeless, like, I think it's Stockton, to bring the people over here to clean over here on the freeway. We need to do that here. Give our homeless a chance to do their own thing with their brothers and sisters.
Thank you. Councilmember Larson?
There were two other questions that the public raised, um, um, into, uh, so how are we going to sustain day-to-day operations while we, um, take on this program? And then this would probably be a question more for, uh, Mr. Kirby. What does that $26,000 for admin entail?
So I would love to answer both of those, but I probably shouldn't. I would defer to the City Manager for the first one of sustaining the operations of the daily, uh, city activities. And Mr. Kirby, if he's still on the line for the second one.
Mr. Hampton, will you share with us, uh, all hands on deck, sir?
Yes, uh, the, the direction regarding all hands in, uh, on deck, um, to address this issue, uh, so that we can at least try to stop the trend, hopefully reverse the trend in 120 days. Um, it is being accomplished by reprioritizing work within each department. We are not, uh, reducing the level of service. We are not, um, changing our service standards, if you will, um, and we're still providing the same essential services. Primarily, the work here is being carried out by the department directors, um, for at least the planning and administration of it. Regarding the field work, it will be addressed by the personnel that are out in the field doing their day-to-day job. We have, as, as you know, you have added, um, some staffing to the police department. And they have put together a care team, which actually undertook, uh, the first steps. As, as if you will attest, uh, three weeks ago, Chief, four weeks ago. And it produced some fairly good results, uh, in a very short period of time in a very small area. And, um, so we have those resources available to, to us. So I'm confident that we can undertake this responsibility without any reduction in services. I'm not proposing any reduction in services. But as you've heard me say, I've also said that as the City, uh, Manager, uh, my response to Council is we need to hit the pause key as a policy entity. Staff will not be able, over the next 120 days, to pursue new projects, um, new research, um, or, um, further planning other than this being the one priority. I, I've described this as currently, uh, we're sustaining operations and we're doing 10 things, okay? I prefer to identify one or two things at a time and do them very, very well. And currently, we're just doing 10 things, okay? And in this area, this is one of the things we're not even doing, okay? I, I don't see this as a choice. I see it as a moral, ethical, and legal obligation to change what's happening in this community.
And respect to the, uh, Mr. Kirby would have to answer how he's gonna spend his money and, and allocations, so I don't think we're, we can get him back on, uh, one more. You're asking, you asked about, uh?
Yes, the, one of the members of the public asked about the $26,000.
But that was towards the specific provider?
Budget that we're approv, that we're approving.
But it was for Ms., it was in regard to the provider, not us, right? So.
Can we inquire if you would be able to speak to it? I mean, it's our, it's a tax paying, taxpayer money.
As well, I, I suppose, um, Ms. Pitt needs to tell us about the HEAP funds too, right?
So y'all can give me just a moment, because I just lost my Zoom connection, so hopefully that's on everyone.
Yes, Mr. Hampton, while we're, while we're waiting?
So I might be able to fill in the gap here. First of all, I just want to reiterate for the community, the Council's probably aware of this. The forecasted cost before you that's identified as a budget, it is a proposed budget. It has costs forecasted. They have not been memorialized through any, um, in-depth formal negotiation or any contracts. And relative to the $26,000, that would be the outer limits. So these are not hard fixed costs. And I know there's a lot of discussion about where are we putting 200 beds? And, um, it was interesting sitting here, watching the chief, uh, avoid, uh, identifying where we would put 200 beds. And that's because it would be, uh, inappropriate and it would be very difficult for the city to identify, um, the property owner or entity that is working with the nonprofits that will be providing the space through a contract with them. And that's as far as I'm going to go.
All right, Mr. Kirby's on to finalize that. Mr. Kirby, are you there, sir? Is he there?
Here, it's just known this is misbehaving.
Oh, okay. We're waiting to hear from you, Mr. Kirby. Maybe it's because I said to hang up on him, because the time ran out.
Oddly enough, I just don't have any ability to, I think, to, there we go.
Okay. There we go. Mr. Kirby?
There we go.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Larson, great question. Yeah, I, I think that I am gonna answer it this way, though. I, I tend to maybe be a little over-respectful in my, um, approach to how I do my business. So I just, I just want to say this. I, I, that $26,000 pays for, uh, liability insurance and operation insurance. It pays for accountants, it pays for, um, all of the things that we have to do as a corporation in California who spends millions of dollars in the, uh, Turlock community and employs, uh, dozens of people across the county. That being said, this is a moral imperative. These people need a place to go. Uh, the mission is, uh, is a, a, a place of, of tremendous grace and mercy. And we do a great job, given the resources that we have to do. This problem, the problem that you have tonight, the problem that, that, that we need to solve with these 200 beds, this isn't the mission's problem. This is our community's problem. This isn't the mission's proposal. This is a tremendous effort by a lot of really brave staff members and, and, and politicians to say, look, we can't do this anymore. I, I, I'm not rebuking any of you. I, I, I appreciate how hard this is, because I listen to all of those voices. And I understand that everybody has a stake in, in what it feels like to live in this city. Including the people who are unsheltered. But folks, I'm not the enemy, the mission is not the enemy, we're not in this to enrich ourselves. I'm so tired of that foolish narrative. This money is not so that we can grow, so that we can do anything other than serve. The only thing that I've asked for is three staff positions to cover a shelter that is outside of the building that I currently occupy. And two security guards. I have to pay for insurance to extend my operation. Somebody has to pay for the hours of my time that I'm taking away from the donors who invest in the work that we do to help people overcome their, their barrier of addiction. I'm not gonna be rebuked by this Council, I'm not gonna be rebuked by this community, this mission isn't gonna be rebuked. We're here to serve, I'm proud to be a partner, and I'm thankful for the direction that the, that the City Manager is taking us and this chief is taking us. And I'm, and I'm happy to be a partner. But I'm not gonna be the whipping boy, and neither is the mission. So if you can do this without us and you want to save 130,000 bucks, I, I applaud it. Thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Council, good evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Larson?
Great, so, uh, thank you so much for answering those questions. I am in total agreement that we have a, a huge growing issue in our community. It's not only has it been clear since when I very first ran for this Council seat in 2018, but it's continued and it's gotten worse. And there is a clear indication from the public through our, uh, re, our surveys, uh, from the city perspective in terms of Measure A and even Measure A ordinance itself, that the city and the city, the citizens of the, of our, of our community need us to act and act now. And I think that there has been an overwhelming effort on staff, um, and from our administrators to step into this role relatively new to, to take this, to take this on. And, um, with the assurance provided that we are absolutely within our, our, um, legal authorities, as well as we have the resources. I do have a few, um, I do have a few comments about the effort so far, just to make sure that we're all on the same page. Like one, having that the ham center or have some type of day center be available for these individuals. And on the weekends, people need food. I need food on the weekends, so we need to ensure that that is available in some capacity. And I'm not an expert at these operations, so that minority exists, but just to have that, you know, absolutely insured. So yeah, those are basically all of the comments. I mean, a huge, huge effort. I absolutely second my colleagues' opinion of the effort taken on by our city. And I guess just to pick our chief's brain a little bit more, has an effort like this been explored or to this magnitude by previous councils, by previous administrations before this year?
I've been involved in the city since 1988 as a volunteer police explorer, and I cannot remember a time in history of the city of Turlock where an emergency has been declared and the city has operated under that authority of an emergency to take this type of action.
Councilwoman Shadie?
Kind of, I want to echo the sentiment of some of the caller. First off, I want to thank staff for all the work that you guys put in. This is a long time coming. We've recognized it as a crisis since day one of stepping into office and have been looking for what the first step is going to be. And we'll continue to work together to try and figure out the best ways to move forward. But one of the key concerns I have about the proposal that we're putting out for right now is specifically, well, two pieces. One, expansion of shelter as it's currently constructed, I feel is going to be expanding a business model that is not being well-received and is not being utilized to the degree that we need it. When Liz talks about the limited hours, limited abilities for partners, pets, and families, the type of shelter that I believe would be more worthwhile, and we did see it in We Care's budget proposals, the type of like pallet homes, those types of facilities address a lot of what is causing reservations from people that are out on the streets to coming into shelter. And I think that leasing out a space and just creating more of the dorm-style living arrangements is not going to get us as much new participation in our shelters as we're going to try, as we want to get. And beyond that, I really would like for us to go after the county funding sources that are available right now. We, I know that the public, to some degree, has recognized that addressing homelessness is something that they want to be prioritized, but overwhelmingly, and it's been the sentiment of the mayor in previous years as well, is that this is primarily a county problem and a county-funded initiative when we're talking about social services. With the specifics of potential 400 of the $500,000 being shelter expansion, right now through the ESG funding, they're ready to write checks for shelters that want to expand their operations. And I think that it would be best for us to look to that funding stream first and have that conversation with the county and with our service providers and see if we can go the means of acquiring the funding there. And then, you know, where there is dealt, I'd rather that $500,000 go towards transitional housing, where they didn't give us that funding, or towards roads, or, you know, one of the things that we know the general funds need to be used for. I definitely agree that we need to have the daytime accommodations because getting people in during the evenings and then kicking them out in the mornings is, that dynamic is what causes a lot of people to choose living in a tent over the existing shelters. They don't have any sort of stabilizing factor in their life. And, you know, that's why I think when we're advocating for whatever spending that we're going to want, we need to make it align with what that population needs and wants. And that's why I would like to also echo the sentiments of the caller that suggested that within this community group, that we get as many participants from the homeless community into there so that they are shaping their own future. They're telling us where there is need and where there is gap. Additionally, I think in listening to some of these people, I think one of the issues that we have is there is issues with service providers or with a staff member within the service provider, and people feel disenchanted and disengaged with that service. I think it'd be great if there was a mechanism, ideally like a case management that's independent from that service provider, where they can go to and they could advocate for their existing needs. And then, you know, if not, a minimum like a mechanism for, I know that we have the, we're standing up, emergency, what is it? What do you call it? You know the terms.
Emergency Action Plan.
What is it?
Emergency Action Plan.
Okay, yeah. And there's a designated person responsible for all those different parts. How, so right now, we've got folks over on Maine that have personal belongings that need to be moved. Where do we direct them to access the services that we are trying to connect them to? So if they need their materials transported to a storage facility or to Turlock Gospel Mission that's helping that, do they have a designated individual that's going to be available to them?
So I can answer the last question. As part of the Incident Action Plan for 1400 West Maine, in the Operations section, there is a transportation unit, and we've identified staff to make themselves available with an appropriate vehicle to transport people from 1400 West Maine to wherever, within reason, they want to go, including to a shelter, to a storage unit, to a family member. Those transportation services will be made available starting on Thursday at 1400 West Maine.
So their personal belongings, we would help transport their personal belongings?
At this point, we've made accommodations for people, but I'll see if we can work into the plan property as well. And I'm not guaranteeing we can, but I'm saying we got people covered. I'll work on property.
I appreciate that. Yeah, and in addition to that, yeah, I really do thank the staff for all the hard work they've put in. I know this is, this is an impossible issue to address, and I hope we move through it with grace and receptive to the outside recommendations, specifically with those individuals that are out there every single day and advocating for them to develop solutions and working, telling our service providers what is needed and helping them as partners develop those accommodations. Really, I want that $500,000 not to go towards like more bunk beds, but non-congregate living because I know that will get us more bang for our buck in terms of getting people off the streets.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Oh, we're just starting. First of all, there's not going to be a perfect fix. We all know that. But we are a team, and I think that as a team, and I'm looking at my colleagues, and I know that every one of them has the same heart. We want to help this situation. It is a crisis. We want to help remedy a crisis. That's what we're here for. Second, thank you to Gary Hampton, our acting city manager, for taking this on. This is something that we all said we wanted to do, and he absolutely stepped up and with Chief Williams' help, we have an action plan now. Is it perfect? No. But will it help? Yes. And is it fluid? Yes. And can we fix things that are not right? Yes. Some issues, I have some issues with some of the line items for the budget, but this isn't, this isn't a set-in-stone formal budget. This is an estimate. And we will have time to discuss the items in there that we have issues with and that we would like to see potentially other explanations of. So I don't want to get hung up on my usual budget thing. Thank you for that, Madam Mayor. I did, though, check with our accounting department.
Yeah.
And Nadine was great. Thank you, Nadine. I know you're out there somewhere. She did get me the current situation that we have with our unassigned general funds reserve. So for everyone's information, there is monies available to the tune of about 2.591 million at this point that we have unspent above and beyond our 6.5 and our other assigned amounts. I also did reach out to Mayor and Pitt, and we have, we do have HEAP funds. They have been sort of earmarked. We will hear about this at our next agenda, at our next city council meeting. There's about 355,000 that we will be asked to be assigning. There looks to be some crossover, so some of the items that are in here may be in that money. That's something that I would ask maybe Mr. Hampton and Ms. Pitt to go over and see if we can cross out anything that's a duplication of monies. Mr. Bridegroom brought up a couple of things. He wanted to know about HEAP funds, so hopefully that helped answer his question. He also wanted to know about the shelter or the storage unit at Turlock Gospel Mission. That would be a question of mine, too. So we know that we're going to need storage for some of the homeless property. That's what it was earmarked for. That's what we helped purchase it for. So to my knowledge, we have not yet used it for that, but I would love to see it be used for that as soon as possible. Let's see, what else did he have? The armory was another one of his questions. I know the armory is not in a state that it could be used or could be lived in by anyone. It's got lead-based paint issues. It's got lead issues from old bullets. It's just not habitable right now in its condition. So that was, hopefully that helped answer that. Can we get the county to help step in and cover some of these costs would be my question. I would volunteer to be on an ad hoc committee or a committee to meet with the county to work through budget issues. Maybe there's money there that they will help us with this. Again, I will volunteer to help with that. And thank you, finally, thank you to the police department and the fire department for everything that they've done to this point with helping with the homeless. I know it is a huge undertaking, and I just want to say thank you for that. Thank you to our staff and the city manager and the city attorney for all of their hard work.
So I've been sitting here for, at one of these chairs, for up to 12 years, and we have discussed it nauseam not what we're going to do. And here's the time when we're actually having an action, and it may not be entirely perfect, but we're in a position where we can actually take an action. I think that there's nothing wrong with saying all hands on deck, and it was impressive. I got to sit in one of the meetings, and it was the first meeting, I believe, Mr. Petrolakis got to have the opportunity to sit with all of our staff, and everybody came to the table with what they could do from their department, and it was phenomenal. He got to see everybody thinking outside the box, and that's exactly what you want to do every day in your job. And you don't get to do that. You go and you do the same thing over and over again. So, Mr. Petrolakis, you spent a lot of time on this. I truly appreciate the exhausting amount of work that you put into this to save us and to make sure that you covered our bases and covered the needs of the city and the community. We, as policymakers, are here, and I say it over and over again, we're here to say we want you to do X. And that decree has happened over and over again by all of my colleagues about homelessness. Help us do something. So all we do is we tell the city manager, we want something done. The what? The how is done by the city manager and staff. So this, today, the presentation, I didn't know what was going to come up. We got what little bit anybody else saw on an agenda. This is all fresh, new to us as well, and that's how it should be done. I don't want to micromanage. I don't want to be telling them, okay, take a deep breath now, breathe out. I'm really impressed with our staff and what you guys put together to do something here. Again, we're all human, all of us, every person that we're talking about in this activity we're about to take on. And that means that we're going to make mistakes and that we're going to be graceful about it, but we're also going to be able to go fluid with it and see what the needs are. This is a 120-day expectation, knowing full well that the big dreams come afterwards from what we find what there truly are as far as needs. So look at it in components. Don't look at it and say we're swallowing an elephant because we won't. And I'm just proud that we've come to the table with a huge action. Let's see what we can do. Let's see if we can make a difference and if we can help some people. Statistically, take the data and find out, did we actually help people get out of this? That's my goal. So with that, we have a resolution, two resolutions?
Mayor, if I may, I missed one thing earlier, and I wanted to make it very clear that I'm also very in favor of vice mayor's establishing of a work group in coordination with the county, and if that looks like council members, city management, city attorney, to ensure that, you know, we're all on the same page for when these individuals do end up in the shelter, that they can transition to housing, treatment programs, and mental services, the things that we just simply can't do. So thank you.
Thank you for that.
Motion to approve both resolutions as written, Madam Clerk.
And that one resolution for the proclamation was with the typo change, correct?
Would we be able to separate them for voting purposes?
It sounds like we need to then. Yes, would you, so your motion is for the proclamation then?
Sure.
Okay, then we have a second?
Second?
Okay, so we have the first resolution, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nisrati?
Yes.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Booblaq?
Yes. It passes 5-0. Resolution, the secondary one?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion.
Second?
And a second. Clerk, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson?
Yes.
Councilmember Nisrati?
No.
Councilmember Franco?
Yes.
Councilmember Moniz?
Yes.
Mayor Booblaq?
Yes. It passes 4-1, dissenting Councilmember Nisrati. Now, I would like to open the public comment. Public comment is to only be the item on the agenda, which kind of alleviates the problem here because you want to talk about your roads, you can't call in today on that. But I'm open to have a public comment opened again?
About what?
The only thing you can talk about for your three minutes is an item that is on today's agendas because it's a special meeting. So agendas are only for today's item. We've pretty much discussed homeless, but if somebody wants to call in and cover homeless again, they can, or the little league.
Any member of the public would like to address the council? Please raise your hand either in person or on Zoom.
Anybody out there?
Thank you, Mary.
I want to say one thing.
Okay, come on up.
Of course.
Keep that mask on.
Yeah. I think that this, we need this money. We do need this money to do this because we're not going to be able to do it without. And like I said, if we can have the NAIAA classes, the training and all that, and if you can bring, because I just talked too stretch, if we can bring them in to help and train them to help their brothers and sisters, you're going to get more people willing to come in. You understand? Because they, when I did outside and I worked outside, I did the ham center from 7:00 at night to 10:00 in the morning, and we did it for free. We had the biggest outcome ever, but they helped us. We let them help us with their brothers and sisters. It wasn't us just saying this, 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 this. We all went by the rules, but if you let them interact with each other because they have the same lingo, you know what I mean? And then you're making them feel like they're doing something, not just going into a program or doing that. And the Gospel Mission, I'm telling you, he's got And the Gospel Mission, I'm telling you, he's got a lot of things there. He has a lot of stuff there to help the homeless right now. And I'm totally aboard with Christian. I am. I could tell you, he's like mentoring even me and things that I didn't see in Rebecca and Pam and even the mayor. It's like my blinders come off because I was like, "Oh, no, no, no," you know? But yeah, we do need to get them off the streets. And you have to make them feel apart. You have to make them feel you wanted. That's what was upsetting, that not one provider really was out there showing the love, saying, "Hey, we know you're going to have a change. We know you're stressful, but you know what? Come in here and just check it out." Christian told me to tell everybody when I went to Navigate, "Tell them to come in for two days. Just try it for two days. We'll let you come in and out. Come in and try it." Well, Tony was going to do it, but he ended up passing away, like I said. And I have another lady with her two kids going in this week and the mom. And then I had other people that I talked, that went to We Care. They love it. They're like, "Man, thank you for getting me off the streets. I really loved it." But they tried it, you know? But if you don't have something for them to do and educate them, and you're sitting there and you're just bored, and I know somebody said something about the TV, you've got to give them a break, too. You know, put a little TV on, you give them a little love, you know, have a little, what is it, root beer float or something, you know? But still, you have to have the education. And that's what the Gospel Mission is doing right now. They're training them in the kitchen. They're training them for computers. They're showing how to make resumes. You can go to Bible study if you want. They have so much to offer, you know? Even washing your clothes. They don't know what, why clothes are just hot, you know, sometimes, or cold is with cold, and you're retraining people.
Thank you, Liz. Anyone out there on Zoom land?
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a caller on Zoom, the last name Kamara.
Mr. Kamara?
Breaker, breaker, you can't hear me.
Do you hear?
Oh, oh, yeah. All right. Let me take off. Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, I took you off speaker. I just wanted to make a quick comment. It did sadden me, obviously, that local representation has decided to go in a direction without first seeking counsel and participation from those that would be most impacted by this decision, which are the residents of that neighborhood in the immediate vicinity of where this is going to take place. These would be residents in Councilmember Moniz's district and the businesses downtown along the corridor of Main Street. So I understand, Councilmember Franco had spoken to this, I actually was at Captain Williams, that he had said that town hall-type meetings will be conducted going forward. But it's an analogy, in essence, of, I don't know, engaging in negotiations and purchasing a home sight unseen and waiting to be appraised. That's a horrible negotiation position. And even though that's happening today en masse, particularly from people from the Bay Area, that's the most valuable asset that anyone will hold during their life, physical asset. And it's probably not something that anybody in that room and anybody listening to this phone call would do. And that's exactly what's been done tonight, in that there's been zero public participation in the cultivation and the development of this plan. So, and in regards to transparency, Turlock Gospel Mission and Christian Kirby, on multiple occasions, it's been requested by members of the public in a public forum that he divulged what he pays himself, and he has refused repeatedly. So as a show of faith, I understand he doesn't want to be the whipping boy of the community, nor does the agency. But generally speaking, there is an absence of faith. There is a deficit of trust at all levels of politics and leadership in this country. And it's manifesting here at the local level. So if you don't see that, well, good luck, Turlock. Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no other callers.
All right. I will close the public hearing and bring you to adjournment. All in favor of adjournment, say aye?
Aye.
Thank you.